My name is Tricia Wagner. For those of you who don't know me, I am a grant writer and program development coordinator here with ECIA. And I do organize these trainings. And I would like to welcome Pat Callahan today. He was gracious enough to come and offer a training on city council and mayor orientations. The training today is being personally funded by our grant that we received through the USPA to provide group trainings and technical assistance for our communities. So I wanted to introduce Pat Callahan first. Before I do that, they'll just real quick, if you have any questions throughout the training, just go ahead and either pop them into the chat box and we'll address those at the end of the presentation, or just at the end of the presentation, feel free to unmute yourself and address the questions that you have with Pat. So Patrick Callahan served as city manager from Macokota, Iowa from 1978 to 1993, and as city administrator for Anamosa, Iowa from 2006 to 2010. He has also served as a consultant to cities for the Institute of Public Affairs at the University of Iowa from 1993 to 2005. He worked as a municipal consultant for Snyder and Associates from 2010 to 2013. He established Callahan Municipal Consultants, OLC, in 2013 and provides numerous consulting services to cities. He has a bachelor's degree in political science from Lawrence College and a master's degree in public administration from the University of Iowa. Well, thank you, Pat. I'll let you go ahead then and take it from here.
Okay. Well, some of you may have heard this presentation before because I gave this identical presentation to the Iowa municipal finance officers meeting in Des Moines in October of last year. And so if that's the case, this is going to either be a refresher course or an afternoon nap for you. It's up to you, whatever you want to make, okay? The other little disclaimer I'll put in there before we get started, and that is, I'm going to talk about a lot of things that you can do to help get new people started who have just assumed the office of mayor and council members. But you will probably not do all of these things, but it's one of those things where you kind of look at it as a smorgasbord of ideas and you pick and choose what works best for you and what works best for your community. The other thing I have to keep in mind is, is that there's quite a variety in people watching this today. We've got city clerks, city administrators, deputy city clerks watching. And that was the original purpose of putting this together was for that particular audience. But I also know we have some council members watching, which is good because you can share this with your staff and say, this wouldn't be a bad idea to have a program like this for incoming council members and incoming mayors. And I also see from the list, we've got some folks from county government. And obviously, what you can do is just when I say city councilor, mayor, you can interpret that as meaning board of supervisors, or really any board of your mission that you have, that you're getting new members on and you're trying to acclimate them to this new role that they've just assumed. So the other thing I'll tell you, this is kind of a two-part series. On April 14th, as a follow-up to this, we're going to do another workshop on what I call the 10 Habits of Highly Effective City Councils. And what I did was I looked back over my 48 years in government and kind of thought a little bit about what I've seen councils do that councils were very successful, and then what councils did that were struggling and had their issues. And that was the whole idea of that other workshop we're going to do on April 14th. So as Tricia said, I've got a lot of experience in city government. Actually worked for four different cities, Fort Madison, West Point, Macokota, Anamosa. And as she said, a lot of consulting work as well. So, okay, let's get right to the topic. And that is, usually I do this workshop, as I mentioned, early in the fall. And as I look back on my career, one of the more stressful times in my career was always in August, September, and October, right before city elections. Because it's kind of stressful for those of us in city government who are looking at getting a new boss. And you're always wondering what, who's going to get elected, who's going to be the boss? And then you also wonder, what are they going to say in their campaigns? Are they going to be critical of the city manager, city administrator? Are they going to be critical of the staff? What will they say as they're out there campaigning? And for those of you who have a good mayor and a great city councilor or a great board of supervisors, boy, appreciate it. Because I travel the state a lot, and that is not the case everywhere. And hopefully, we can kind of turn the tide in some of these cities if we can get the message out that it is so critical that we get folks off on a good start in their new role as mayor or council member. So, so I thought about this, I thought, okay, yeah, you've got some new people coming in on the scene, new board members, new council members. There's kind of three options you can take. You can kind of ignore them and hope for the best and hope that, hey, they'll pick this up, you know, how tough can it be type thing. Or the other thing you can do is you can assume that they do know a lot of city stuff. You know, maybe they're a former member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Maybe they've been involved with an economic development group. And so we can kind of make that assumption that they already know a lot of this stuff. Or the other, the third option I've come up with is, we can be more proactive and we can reach out to them and help them make this transition to this new role that they've just assumed. And as I looked back over my career, one of the areas, you know, when you get to this point in your life and you kind of look back over what you've done and what you've done well, and maybe what you could have done better, this is one of those things that I think I could have done better, especially during my time in Macokota. I did learn a little bit and did a little bit better on this when I got to Anamosa. But as I look back, I wished I would have been a little bit more proactive when I had new council members coming onto the scene in Macokota. Okay. This session is going to be broken into kind of four different parts. The first thing we're going to talk about is, why would you even worry about this? Why would you even think about putting together a good orientation session? And if your decision is, yes, that would be good, then what are we going to talk about? What kind of information are we going to try and get out to them? And what's the best way to get that information to them? What's the best approach? And then lastly, as kind of a related topic, I'm going to offer some suggestions on maintaining a good working relationship with all of your elected officials. If you're in city government, it's obviously maintaining that relationship with mayor and council. If you're in county government, obviously it's the board of supervisors, and also maybe some of the other elected officials that you're working with on a regular basis. One of the things that I always liked to consider when it was election time was, why did they choose to run? What was that motivation? Is there a hidden agenda out there? And maybe they're not even sharing with folks as to why they decided to run. And then the other thing I always was fearful of is that candidate that has this axe to grind. You know, maybe they were disgruntled with something that they encountered with the city, and now they want to get on there and make some changes. And I've seen people do that where they have that axe to grind, and then when they come on board, they figure out, I can't do what I want to do. There's legal ramifications, or the rest of the council isn't going to go along with it. And then the frustration sets in, and they're not able to accomplish what their original goal was. Now they either switch gears and take a bigger, a big picture approach, or they become a very difficult individual to deal with. So were they upset with some issues? That's the motivation. Or did someone reach out to them and say, you know, I think you would make a great council member, you'd make a great mayor, you'd make a great member of the board of supervisors. And I always like to know who reached out to them. One of the best examples I can give you is an individual who was a master at this was Milc Kramer, the mayor of Manchester. He would continually recruit people to be on the city council. And I always admired how he did it. And he would do it in person, I was told. And if any of you know Milc Kramer, he's very tall and very persuasive. And I could see someone like him being someone very difficult to say no to. So my challenge to you is, who in your community is that person who can reach out to potentially good council members, good board members, and encourage them to run for office and to be part of your team? So the other thing I always looked for was, did the candidate decide to run because they have a genuine desire to give back to the community, to make the community a better place? And that is your best motivation. If you can find that individual that says, you know, it's time for me to step up to the plate. It's time for me to give back to my community. And usually, if that's the attitude that they have going in, they're usually going to be great council members to work with. Obviously, one of the key roles in a community is that of mayor. And I've seen communities where the role of the mayor can either make or break the city culture, as I say. Because if that mayor comes into the office with the attitude that, I'm going to throw the bums out, we're going to start over and do something entirely different, boy, that sets quite a different tone than someone saying like a Milc Kramer in Manchester who came in with, okay, we've done some great things, let's keep the ball moving, let's get even more things done. So I've seen councils really struggle with that, that new mayor that comes on the scene who has a totally different approach. I remember, and when I lived in Macokota years ago, there was a new mayor that came on the scene. He was actually retired from the Iowa Senate and ran for mayor. And of course, he came in with a different approach, and my city council in Macokota kind of just boxed him out and just ignored him. And he vetoed a few things, but they overrode the vetoes and pretty much did as they wanted. And that makes for a really difficult relationship when a council then kind of puts the mayor off to the side and says, we don't care what you think. The role of mayor is basically what they want to make it. You know, you look at the code of Iowa, mayors do not have a lot of power in most cities, unless it's like Council Bluffs or Evansdale where it's a full-time position. They're limited in what they can do. And so that role of mayor can be many times what they want to make in terms of their ability to persuade the council to take actions that they want them to. So I always tell incoming mayors, it's so critical for you to develop a good working relationship with all the council members if you hope to accomplish some of your goals and objectives. But in that position of mayor, I think it's so critical for your staff to reach out to them early and often and try and develop that good working relationship with that incoming mayor. Why would you even do these council orientation sessions? First and foremost, you want to develop a good working relationship with these folks. Obviously, we can never lose sight of the fact that the council is the boss. You know, in Iowa, the power is vested in that city council, and they ultimately will decide what the future of the city is and will decide who it is that's going to work for the city. So it's so critical, I think, that we reach out to those folks and try and make a good first impression and indicate to them that we're there to help them in this new role as a council member or mayor or a board of supervisors. If you do that, hopefully, good government will result, and you'll get a lot accomplished in your community. If that good working relationship is not established early on in the process, I can tell you, this job of being a city staff member or even a member of the council, it is not fun. And when you get to the point in that relationship where you dread going to that meeting, you can't, you wish there was everything else you could do on a Monday night except vote a council mate, then you're not having a good situation. So finding those good people to run for office. Like I said, I think it's the mayor is someone that can reach out and make sure that we get good candidates running for office. That mayor is a leadership role. But if you have a mayor in your community that is not assuming that leadership role, my guess is somebody else on the council is probably going to assume that role and be the one maybe to reach out to potential candidates. So hopefully, someone in your community has kind of taken upon themselves as to be the leader and someone who will then take a serious effort to encourage good people to run for office. And one of the things I always tell folks is that your boards and commissions many times are a great source of pool of candidates. Your planning and zoning commission, your economic development groups. Maybe you have a library board. I give you an example in Decorah, Iowa. The mayor in Decorah, Iowa, was a library director. And I do see that from time to time where retired city employees will run for elected office. Now, it's kind of interesting, in Decorah, the mayor up there's done a great job and didn't even have any opposition in the last election. But I also know in this area, in the last election, there was, I think, three retired city employees on the ballot. And all three of them ironically were defeated in the ballot. And some of them had council experience, which I thought was fascinating, that the public sometimes will view that former city employee candidate with maybe some, not wanting that individual on the council. So the other thing I like to do in this process is to, is to start early and talk to the people who are running for office and get to them before they start making promises that they cannot keep. And because I've seen that happen, where candidates will run for office and then make promises when they're going door-to-door, or make promises in their ads, and then come and find out they can't fulfill those promises, which is very frustrating for them, and also very frustrating maybe for the voters who said, well, I elected you because I want you to do this, and then come and find out that can't be done. The best example I will give you is, when I was in Fort Madison years ago, mayor ran for office and he beat an incumbent. And his whole campaign was based upon, he was going to lower sewer rates, because we had just raised sewer rates to fund a new wastewater treatment plant. Well, he gets elected under that promise, and all the older folks in the community saw him regularly because he drove that bus for the elderly to get to different appointments. And he got elected, and of course, what did they do? Every time they got on the bus, they would say, hey, when is my sewer rate going to get lowered? When my sewer bill's going down? Well, guess what? He found out he could do it. And first of all, he didn't have the council's support. And it drove him, it had such an impact on him that that poor man had a heart attack and died in office because he made a promise that there was no way he could ever keep. And so we want to reach out to these folks early so that they don't make promises that they can't keep. So, well, that's why I'm a firm believer that an orientation session might start right after the papers have been filed, before they even start their campaigns. I know in Anamosa, in fact, I gave you my handout of my agenda that I did. I did an orientation session in early October before they were hitting the campaign trail, you know, trying to get votes to get elected. So I think it's important that we reach out, at least initially, to let them know, you know, what some of the laws and things that we have to adhere to in city government, many times over which we have no control. Maybe there's a DNR mandate that we upgrade our wastewater plant, and we have to raise our sewer rates. We do not have a choice. And so I think it's great that we can reach out to those folks early, either by personal contact, maybe the mayor might be that person to reach out to, maybe the city clerk, city administrator, and just say, hey, see you file papers to run for office? We would love to meet with you. We're going to have an information session in early October, and we're going to explain to you what's going on in city government, and we're here to answer all your questions. Or maybe they might even want a one-on-one time with you, in which case you would reach out and pick a time that's convenient, pick a location that's, that works for them, and just have that one-on-one session with them to kind of give them that big picture of what city government is all about. And maybe at that point, you try and try and reach out to them and see what that motivation is. What are they, what are they putting in their campaign materials? What are they putting in their advertisements? I used to try and keep copies of any of that stuff that would come out and hang on to it, because I want to refer back to it later and see what it is that they were campaigning on and what they hoped was going to resonate with the voters. So take a look at what they're doing and saying, so that you can either help them accomplish those objectives, or if they're putting out information that is not correct, then you need to be kind of watching as to, how do we delicately explain to them that, that promise you just made? The DNR is not going to allow you to fulfill that, fulfill that promise, or whatever it is that might be holding you back. One of the best things that you can do in an orientation session is explain to them what's in the code of Iowa. As we all know, we have little or no control or what's in the code of Iowa, unless, of course, you run for the state legislature, and that's a whole other workshop, okay? But what's in the code of Iowa, there's much of it there that impacts city, city government and county government. So we need to reach out to those folks and explain to them what's in that code that pertains to them. Things like the open meetings law, or the open records law, or the nepotism law. For example, if someone's running for office and their goal is to get their son or their daughter appointed to manager of the swimming pool, that's a whole other issue that you're dealing with now. So we also like to take the opportunity and make some good information available to them. Maybe, maybe copies of the city code. Maybe there's some things that the city's working on in terms of projects, and maybe a summary of the project, why it's being done. Another good thing to do is review with them the legislative process. And what I mean by that is, if they have something on their agenda that they want to see accomplished, it's probably going to be done one of three ways. It's going to be, it's going to involve a motion that the council's going to pass. It could involve an ordinance. Maybe they're running for office because they want tighter restrictions on the nuisance of April law. And maybe they need to know that, okay, in order to do that, we're going to have to pass a new ordinance, and what goes into passing a new ordinance. And then the other thing is resolutions. If there's a new policy that they want to see adopted, maybe it might be done by a resolution. So it's kind of good for them to see those three options as far as the legislative process is concerned in city government, or for that matter, county government too. And then the other thing I like to do is, very early on, even before the election, I think it's great for them to receive a copy of the council packets, and so that you inform them what they're going to see in that packet, when they will receive it, and how information gets into that pack. So I think it would be great to reach out to those candidates and give them the same packet that is going out to the regular council. Now, there are some minor exceptions. If there's things that you're going to talk about in closed session, obviously, that would be filtered out. Now, the nice thing about city websites and the technology we have, many times, anyone can access what's in the council packets. So many of you live in communities where your council packets are on the website. So obviously, they'll know how to access that, but if that's not the case, I would urge you to include them on your email list in terms of getting copies of those packets. Another great thing to give them is the Iowa League of Cities Municipal Policy Leaders' Handbook, and urge them to read the chapter that talks about what is the role of the mayor and what is the role of the city council. And having been a board of supervisor member years ago, I also know that ISAC, the Iowa State Association of Counties, has the same kind of handbook for your elected officials. I would make sure that they, they get copies of the, at least the pertinent sections of those handbooks. The other thing is to introduce them to your department heads and let them know who they are, what role they fulfill for the city. And I think it's even a good idea to let them know that there's some other folks out there that have, that we rely on quite extensively. I refer to them as our key associates, okay? They're not city department heads, they're not on payroll. But my guess is, we're paying them a lot of money, okay? These are people like your engineers that are working on projects for you. They might be your financial advisors who are helping you secure loans or bonds to pay for your projects. Might even be your insurance agent who can discuss with them what insurance coverages are provided by the city or county. And lastly, a lot of times, that bonding attorney can be a great resource to let them know, you know, if there's anything that they can help with. And I think it's great to introduce them and get the, so that they know who are on your boards and commissions. There's one key board that I think is critical, that they understand that role of that board and what they have, what power they have, and that's the library board. Because in Iowa, the library board is, it's an interesting situation, that the council really has only two controls of that library board. One is actually appointing who's on the board, and then the second thing is the total sum of property tax revenue that is allocated to the library for cost. Beyond that, the library board is a pretty autonomous group and pretty much set their own policies and procedures and stuff. So sometimes that's a hard thing for new council members to comprehend, is how much power and authority that a library board has. But it's also important for them to know about the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the zoning board of adjustment, how that all fits together, and any other board or commission that you might have. I think it's critical, if you have a number of city projects that are in progress or about to be embarked upon, that you provide some good information about those projects. And it is critical, I tell you, that you provide them information as to why that is a critical project. Why is it that the city is doing this project? The best example I can give you is Bloomfield, Iowa, and which, there was a, in, the council and the mayor there were unanimously behind a downtown streetscape improvement project. And a group of people ran against the incumbents and beat them. And the whole premise of their campaign was, we shouldn't be doing that downtown streetscape project. And the entire council, almost all but one got voted out, and the mayor got voted out. And those folks that came into that particular community had a real axe to grind and made life extremely difficult for the staff. And I understand, in a later election, a lot of those folks were not reelected, and that they even went back to the former mayor who was defeated in that early election, and now that former mayor is back on the council. So I think it's so important that you reach out to those folks and explain to them the background and the reasons why you're doing these major projects that they might see taking place around the community. Another good thing to do is talk about all your different policies and your programs that you have in place, and, and provide a little explanation on them. Things like, you know, maybe your personnel policies. It could be, you might have, like the last session I did, I talked about the importance of maybe having a good TIF policy, how and when you will use TIF in your community, so you can explain those policies. There are some communities, and not too far away, Asbury, has what is called a code of conduct. And I cannot promote this one enough. I think this is an excellent thing to have, and that is to put in place kind of a code of conduct that incoming council members can look at and say, these are the expectations in terms of my new role as a council member or a mayor. And I realize that in Iowa, there isn't a whole heck of a lot you can do if you have that council member that just kind of ignores what you have in that code of ethics. But what you can do is you, if you have someone that totally ignores that code and is going totally contrary to your, your vision and your mission, or what you think the community stands for, and you can censor them. And I've actually known cities out there that have done it. I wrote an article on this subject for the Iowa League of Cities Citiescape Magazine. In fact, I didn't, I'm going to write that article with the next session on the 10 Habits of Highly Effective Councils, but I think it would be good for them, if you have such a thing in place, to explain why it's there and why it was adopted by previous councils. Now, the great thing is, if they are elected to the council, right before they even take office, is an opportunity for training. The Iowa League of Cities, as we all probably know, does something called the Municipal Leadership Academy. I was actually working for the Institute of Public Affairs when the institute and the Iowa League and Iowa State Extension put together this concept of a training program for incoming council members. And it is excellent. For those of you who have attended it, you know what I'm talking about. It's kind of a three-part series. In fact, part three of the series starts here in April. I think this coming Saturday is that they're traveling the state. So if you missed the other two, and you think, whoa, I should have taken advantage of this, well, at least you're going to be able to take part in part three. So if you, if you have an interest in doing that, if you go on to the Iowa League of Cities website, iowaleague.org, you can see information about that academy, because that is a wonderful way to help orient your new council members and get them involved. Okay, let's go to new council members orientation. In what I call my supplemental handout, I gave you a detailed outline of what they did, they do in Nevada, Iowa. At least I still hope they do that. I got this example a number of years ago, and I'm assuming that Nevada still does that, but it's a, it's a great outline of their orientation session. One of the things that talks about in, in the Iowa League of Cities Policy Leader Handbook is the role of the mayor. What is the mayor's job? They kind of lead the council, lead the discussion. And if you have an individual who's never been a mayor before, who has never been a member of the city council, maybe they've never even served on a board or commission, it would be really ideal for you to make sure that they attend some council meetings prior to taking office, so that they can observe the outgoing mayor and what the outgoing mayor does. Years and years ago, I had a mayor in Macokota who did not feel comfortable who did not feel comfortable in that role of mayor at council meetings. And he would, he would introduce basically bare minimum, introduce the subject, and then he would turn to me and say, well, Pat's going to tell you all about this. And so, uh, I had to sit on his left-hand side. And basically, he didn't introduce it, but I would, I would feel like I was taking over the meeting. And that's not a good position for a city manager or city administrator to be in. So you want the mayor to kind of step up to the plate and lead the discussion at your council meetings. And so it's critical that you reach out to that incoming mayor and make sure they understand what the role is and what their job is, particularly at council meetings. So, and as I said before, I can't stress to you enough that, that Policy Leader Handbook. Now, when you give them that handbook, it is, you know, it's like that thick, it's quite lengthy. What I always tell council members who look at that and feel a little bit overwhelmed, you do not have to sit down and read that in one night. Uh, you know, if you want to go to sleep in a hurry, that's obviously a good way to do it. Say you're going to read that whole book. I challenge council members to read a chapter per night. You know, one chapter is probably going to be anywhere from, you know, ten to fifteen pages. Just make it a goal to read one chapter per night, and eventually you will get through that handbook. And what it will do, council members, it'll give you that big picture. So if there's anyone listening who's on the council right now that has never taken time to read the handbook, I, there is never too late, okay? Because it will help put everything in perspective if you can read that handbook. And the next thing you want to do is make sure that you explain to the incoming mayor and council member what everyone's role is. What's the role of the city clerk? What's the role of the city administrator? What's the role of the public works director? What's the police chief's role? Now, you may think that they know what your roles are. Uh, and they might know a little bit if they've had some interaction with you. But they may not have, once again, what I call that big picture. So I think it's critical that you explain to them what everybody's role is. Another good person to have, if you do a, an orientation session, hopefully one in person, uh, and like I did, um, with the entire group, and that is to have your city attorney there. And it's one thing for us to say, hey, folks, there's this thing called the open meetings law. And by the way, if you violate it, you will be personally fined, not the city. City's not going to pay your fine. You will be personally fined if you are found to be in violation of the open meetings law. And usually, when a certain, an attorney tells them that, it seems to have a greater impact than when the city clerk tells them that. And I've seen this over and over. So if your city attorney is willing to do it, I think it's great for them to talk about some of the legal issues that they will encounter. Things like conflicts of interest, uh, the nepotism law, uh, open meetings law, all those things that pertain to them in this new role that I've assumed as a council member. Another great person to have at the table is a city clerk. Because a city clerk will be the one who will know what the finances are. They will be able to explain to them what financial reports they will be receiving. You know, will they receive a monthly financial report, uh, showing the expenditures and revenues and balances in all the different funds? Uh, the administrator and the clerk together might explain to them the budget process. Now, we're, we're past the budget process for this year. So those of you who are new, you know a little bit about it. And by the way, if you were totally overwhelmed and you think, wow, I'll never really get my arms around this process, you will, and you'll get better at it every, every time you do it, so. The city administrator can, uh, obviously bring everyone up to date on, on projects. The city administrator is many times that, that person who has the, the entire organization in mind when they're talking to the council. So they can, once again, what I call that big picture, they can provide that big picture. But one of the key things, as I mentioned earlier, is explanation of projects. Another thing that I've seen done is, uh, have a city tour of the various city facilities. And this could be like the tour of the police station, the fire station, the library, uh, public works building, um, wastewater plant, water plant. These are all places that they may have driven by, but I'll bet they've never stopped and gotten out of the car and gone in and see what does this involve? Uh, and they may be fascinated, fascinated by tours of the water plant with the wastewater treatment plant. Because my guess is the complexity of these things are much greater than what they've ever anticipated. So because we're going to be talking about these things at council meetings, I think it's good for them to have had a tour of these facilities, uh, either before they take office or shortly after they take office. And ideally, the best time to do that is like on a Saturday morning where you've got plenty of daylight to work with. Now, in November, December, we don't have a lot of daylight to work with in the evening. But we're coming in that time of year, you know, April, May, June, where we've got a lot of daylight to work with after five o'clock. So if you don't want to do a Saturday meeting, you know, see if everybody can join us at city hall at five o'clock. Uh, see if your public works people will stick around for a little bit and, uh, and give them tours of these various facilities. Because it's one thing to talk about these, these, these operations at a council meeting, but it's a whole other thing if they can see them up close and personal. Now, the other thing we have to cover with them and, uh, is the, uh, some, what I call the basics, you know? Make sure they take the oath of office, uh, make sure that they have their certificate of election, uh, make sure that they are aware of the campaign disclosure report that they have to do. And then the other thing I, uh, I put together years ago, and I gave it to you in, in the handout, and that is, um, what, uh, what, what, what should be on your checklist as your newly elected council member mayor? And I'm going to talk a little bit more about that later, so I'm going to go on to the next slide. Another great thing to do is what I call the calendar of events. And that is, and the, the biggest event that many cities have, of course, is that preparation of that budget. Uh, and I used to put together a calendar, uh, and a budget preparation timetable, uh, usually in December, and got it out to all my department heads, got it out to the council members and said, hey, folks, these are, these are the steps in the process, and this is the timeframe in which we're going to do them. And we are going to have council work sessions to go over that budget. Please get those dates and times on your schedule as soon as possible. And if they conflict with anything that you're doing, let me know so we can come up with an alternative date. And what I used to do is, uh, that timetable for budgeting with, if my council met on the first Monday, I would schedule a special work session on the second Monday. Because I would assume my council members were keeping those Mondays open. Another thing to do is let them know when your boards and commissions meet. You know, when does that library board meet? When does the planning and zoning commission meet? And then the other thing that I was, uh, really stressed to them is the importance of doing goal-setting sessions. Uh, I used to do goal-setting sessions in Makogada, did a couple in, in Anamosa as well. And, uh, and that's one of the things I do for cities right now. In fact, I'm scheduled to do a goal-setting session down in Bellevue in, um, in, in May, but in, in fact, Friday of this week, I'm going to Webster City to do a goal-setting session. But in this area, I, I did a goal-setting session out in Dyersville, uh, in January. And I did one down in West Liberty and Muscatine, uh, late last year. So it's something that I think is critical that you do, maybe not in January when you got a brand-new council. Uh, a lot of times when it's an incoming council, like the one I did in West Liberty, we did it in December. And it was the new incoming council that did the goal setting. So if you, um, want to know what goes into goal-setting, I'm going to talk a little bit more about that uh, with the next session when we talk about the ten habits of highly successful councils. Another thing that's important for them to know is, do you do a capital improvements plan? And when do you update it? A lot of cities that do have capital improvements plan, they update them in October, November. Um, I just finished a capital improvements plan in Cresco. And that's what they're going to do in Cresco, is they're going to, every fall, they're going to take the plan that we put together and update it. Another thing is tax increment financing. If you have tax increment financing, as you may be aware, if you attended the last workshop that I did, uh, is there's some very definite timelines when it comes to TIF. Uh, and particularly when it comes to, uh, reporting requirements. And so it's nice for the council members to know what those timelines are and what kind of things they can expect to see coming before the council if you have tax increment financing. Another great thing that I think the city clerks have is the, uh, the clerk's calendar. At least I hope the Iowa League of Cities is still doing that. And that is a great thing, I think, to give to your incoming council members. Because sometimes I, I think incoming council members don't have an understanding or appreciation of the role of city clerk in the community. And the role of city clerk, as you all know, they have what I call so many different chores that they've got to get done. There are, they have dates that are locked in on forms and things that they have to get filed. And if they don't get them filed on time, you got problems. And so I think it's great for your council members to know, hey, this is what our city clerk is doing, and these are the timelines that she's up against or he's up against. So when they put something on the agenda, for example, approval of the road use tax report. And, uh, you know, it's not one of those things that you can table. You know, we've got a deadline, we've got to meet, and it needs to get approved at this meeting. Another thing is to let them know what they might be receiving in the way of monthly reports. Uh, maybe your public works director, my, I used to have a public works director in Anamosa that did a phenomenal monthly report of what was going on in, in Anamosa. And, uh, and so maybe your public works director does something like that, maybe the city administrator does that. Kind of helps, uh, keep everyone appraised of what's going on. And then also be sure and let them know about all the training opportunities that are out there. I've already mentioned the Municipal Leadership Academy, uh, with round three coming up in April. But there's other things too. There's the Iowa League of Cities Annual Conference. Um, uh, we've got the one coming up, uh, last week in September this year. And it's going to be reasonably close by, it's going to be out in Waterloo. Occasionally, they have it here in Dubuque, uh, about every six, seven years, it's here in Dubuque. Uh, so once again, let the folks know when those are held. And also, the Iowa League of Cities does a great, uh, training session for smaller cities every year. I think they usually do those in June. And so, once again, it's an opportunity for your mayors and councils to, uh, not only to get exposed to some good information, but I like it as an opportunity for them to meet fellow council members and fellow mayors from other communities that they can kind of trade stories with and get to know a little bit. Uh, I think it's, it's a wonderful opportunity for that, that term we all hear so often, that's networking. You know, those of us who've been city managers and city clerks, uh, one of the best things that we can do is, is go to conferences and network with other folks and find out what they're doing in their communities that might be very useful in our community. Another good thing to do is sit down and have that one-on-one meeting with them, particularly the ones that have just gotten elected, and before they even take office. So from that timeframe in early November to January first is an opportunity for you to, uh, to reach out to those folks and maybe meet them for a cup of coffee somewhere and just get to know them a little bit on a more personal basis. Now, maybe it may be the city administrator, the city clerk, maybe the mayor would join you. But I would urge you that when you have those one-on-one individual meetings with them, use this as an opportunity, not so much for you to give them a bunch of information, but for you to just listen. Just hear what they have to say. What questions do they have? Maybe you can delve into why it is they ran for council. What are some of the things that they hope to accomplish? When I do goal-setting sessions, um, the, one of the very first questions I ask incoming council members and incoming mayors is, what do you want your legacy to be? How do you want to be remembered? Because you will be remembered for one, for one thing or another, you will be remembered. And what do you want it to be? What do you want that legacy to be? So that might be an interesting question to start the conversation. Also, give them a chance to meet the city employees, uh, seek out what their expectations are, their plans. And maybe at some point, you put together a, a binder of information. Um, obviously, you're eventually going to give them the code. But I'm going to, next slide here, I'm going to give you some ideas on what kind of information you might want to give them. Okay, obviously, the city code. Maybe you want to walk them through the website, show them what's on the website, how they can access things. It'll cut down on the amount of paper that you have to copy, because obviously not everything is on the, in the website. That Policy Leader Handbook, make sure they have their copy that they can take home and read at their leisure. Uh, if you have a capital improvements plan, it's great to give them a copy of that. Comprehensive plan, they should all have their own copy of that comprehensive plan. And that's another good thing when you have outgoing council members. Ask them to give you back some of these things. Give you back their, their copy of the code, give you back their copy of the comprehensive plan. In fact, what I would suggest you do, and I didn't do this, I wish I would have, is put some sticker or label on the front of these big items like the cap plan and the, and the city code saying, return to city hall when you're no longer in office. Or, or when you are no longer a council member, no longer mayor. Because, uh, these are great things now to pass on to the next person. You might want to give them information about your budget, your finances. You might also talk to them, I, like I said, about your goals and objectives. Maybe give them a copy of the previous goals and objectives that were set by the outgoing council. And also, if you have rules and procedures on how you conduct your council meetings, it would be great for them to have that before they're sworn into office so that in their first council meeting, they have some expectation of what the rules and procedures are that you're going to have. There we go. If you have a committee system, it, it is important for you to explain to them what it is, how it works, how they get on different committees. Uh, if you don't have a committee system, maybe you do like I did in Anamosa, and that's a committee of the whole meeting from time to time. But do keep in mind that if you do have council committee systems, I will tell you that there are some city attorneys, not all, but some city attorneys will tell you, these committees are subject to the open meetings law. And I, I've learned over the years that that's a subject of discussion not everybody agrees with. But if you talk to folks at the Iowa League of Cities, they will probably tell you, if you have established committees, they are subject to open meetings law. Do you have a chain of command, an organizational chart? That would be nice to see, you know, if you're an incoming council member. You have a zoning district map, that would be good for them to have. Something else that you may not think about that I, uh, I like to put in my first budget with them, and that is the summary of all the insurance coverages that they have, that the city has. And the one item that they should be really important for them to see is that you have an errors and omissions, or what is called the linebacker policy, that will cover them and cover the city in the event that they do something that's, uh, you know, that people are going to sue the city for. Uh, now, the other thing I think is critical that, uh, at some point, you might have your insurance agent, uh, come before your council. Um, I, I had a gentleman in, in, in Anamosa that would come from time to time. Usually, he would deliver a dividend check. And I wish, look back on it, I wish I would have used that opportunity to say, well, after you give me my dividend check, why don't you take thirty minutes and explain to the council what coverages we have and what they cover, and particularly the errors and omissions insurance? Because errors and omissions insurance will cover them, but not everything is covered. Uh, and so they can still be held personally liable for some things that the errors and omissions insurance will not cover them for. For example, if they get a speeding ticket going to a city meeting in this leadership academy, that ain't covered, folks, you're going to pay your own speeding tickets. And sometimes if you, uh, have defamation of character lawsuits, that may not be covered either. So it's critical that they know what's covered and they know what's not, what's not covered. Nice to have a city staff directory, so they know who the, particularly who the department heads are. Uh, maybe the names, phone numbers, uh, duties, that type of thing. A detailed city map would be nice. If you've done any recent studies or any recent analysis, particularly water studies, uh, sanitary sewer, wastewater studies, maybe draining studies that have been done. Maybe you've done a study on the condition of one of your buildings, maybe it's your fire station. Uh, maybe you've had a structural engineer look at the library, uh, any of those kinds of things. Or maybe you did a wage study, I know Dyersville did a wage study not too long ago. Give them copies of those studies so that they know what has been done in the past. And also the city audit, uh, that is a great, uh, source of information. Particularly run through with them what recommendations were in those audits and how you've implemented those recommendations. City job descriptions. Now, you may not give them all the job descriptions, but they might be interested in the job description for city administrator, some of your department heads. Another thing that you have in your files that may be of interest is the Iowa Department of Natural Resources uh, inspection of your water system and your sewer utility. Because there may be some things in there that are going to require a huge expenditure in part of the city. And it might be nice to show them, hey, we just didn't pull this idea out of the air. It came in as a result of an inspection by the DNR. Your employee handbook, uh, there might be reference to that from time to time, so they might appreciate a copy of the handbook. If you have tax increment financing, they might like to have that urban renewal plan to look at. Uh, or if you have tax abatement, they might want a copy of the urban revitalization plan. Once again, these are, might be things that are on the website. Uh, but it's nice to make them available, or at least tell them how they can access them. Okay, the basic decisions on orientation session. One of the first things you have to think about is how soon will we have them? How much information we will provide? And maybe how How much information we will provide, and maybe how often we will meet? Because this job they've just assumed is a lot, is a lot of information out there. And you might wanna, you might not wanna flood them with too much on the first night. You might wanna kinda do it in phases. So I always tell staff members, put yourself in their place. And you've just come on the scene and you know little or nothing about city government. And now you're expected to learn all this stuff before you take office on January first. So be mindful of that, as I say, and try not to overwhelm them. And I know that's not easy, cause I just gave you a long list of things I think they should see. Uh, now, the other thing that comes into play is that, uh, a lot of people don't finish their term in the council. They, they move out of town. Uh, for example, I'm doing this goal setting session in Webster City on Friday night, and, uh, two of the five council members are brand new, they came on in midterm. And so, uh, they've, you know, the folks in Webster City now have to have an orientation session for these new council members. And it wasn't, it was a result of the election that they were appointed. So it's easy to overlook these folks and say, oh, we'll catch them next time we do an orientation session. I think it's critical that you reach out to them soon after the appointment or soon after the election, and make sure that they, uh, they, uh, go through the same kind of process. Um, one of the things I have in your handout, uh, was something I put together years ago when I was at the Institute of Public Affairs. And I, it is one of the earlier things that you have in there. And it, it starts out by saying, at the top of the page, it says administration newly elected officials. And it is things that they should do prior to taking office, and then things that they should do in the first thirty days, sixty days, and ninety days. You can read this at your convenience, but I think this is a great tool to, uh, help get new council members acclimated, or new board members acclimated to their new role. And it even talks a little bit about orientation sessions in that handout. I, I downloaded this from the Iowa League of Cities website, but I know where they got it. And that was Tim Shields, and I wrote this in the nineteen nineties, and then the league has updated it from time to time. Okay, maintaining a good working relationship with your mayor and council members. There's a lot of stuff that I suggest you give to them. And maybe it's a good idea, maybe at some point into the future, you have what I call that refresher course. Maybe six, eight months, uh, after they take an office, maybe sometime this summer, where you say, you know, we gave you a lot of stuff, okay? And it's, it's, it's expecting a lot to have you comprehend all this stuff. Why don't we have a little follow-up session? And just kinda go back through what we covered and make sure that if there's any questions that you have, that we answer them and then give them that opportunity. Because, uh, by now, they've had some council meetings, and by now, they've had a chance to read some of the material. Now, I will guarantee you, they have not read everything that you've given them. They have not read the city code from cover to cover. Hopefully, they've read the table of contents, hopefully, they've read some sections that maybe pertains to things that you're working on. They probably have not read the comprehensive plan. But hopefully, they've read the summary that's in the comprehensive plan. So it might be a good thing to have that refresher course somewhere between, I don't know, June, July, August, September. Now, this next section that I'm gonna cover is, I got it from the city manager in Ames, Iowa. He, uh, he did a workshop for the city manager's, um, continuing education program in two thousand thirteen. And it was thirteen suggestions on, uh, that, in maintaining a good working relationship between the city council, the mayor, and the city staff. And so I'm gonna run through some of his suggestions as kind of a getting close to a wrap-up here for you. And if you want the full report on what Steve had, he had a paragraph on all these items, is, um, I, I can certainly provide it to you if you ever wanna see it. Okay, what he said was, realize that council members that come on board, they have their own set of priorities. You need to know and understand what those priorities are very early so that you comprehend where are they coming from in this whole thing. Another thing is never dismiss or ignore a council member. That is easy to do, because if you have that one council member that's kind of the renegade, and he, he or she is just way out there, sometimes fellow council members, sometimes staff, just dismiss them and ignore them. That is not a good thing, you need to continually reach out to them. Another rule of thumb is, I usually use the approach that everybody that came through City Hall could be my boss someday. And I don't care what they, what, how bad they were, I always had to keep in the back of my mind, they could run for council, and they could someday be my boss, or they could be your fellow council member. So always be mindful of that. Uh, the other term I like to use, never burn your bridges, uh, because you never know when you're gonna have to deal with those people again. Number four is always be candid with all the issues that are on the agenda. Do not sugarcoat things, do not lie, uh, to people, because it will come back to haunt you. So always be candid as to what's on the agenda, why it's on the agenda, and what you're looking for in terms of what council action you're looking for. Because it's probably not on the agenda unless you're seeking some council actions, do something. So, uh, be candid with them, what you're looking for. Another good rule that Steve had was, there is not, there's usually no one right answer. There might be a number of solutions to what you're doing. And so to go into a council meeting and think, have that mindset that there's only one way to do this, and one way to do it right? No, step back and be open to other ideas and other suggestions, because there may be more than one way to do something. And number six was, never play games with the budget, he said. Uh, don't pad certain areas, you know? Make sure that your budget is realistic and as accurate as possible. Now, I think it's perfectly fine to, when you're doing your budget, to maybe, uh, have a little bit of cushion when it comes to expenditures, and maybe be a little conservative on your revenues, because we're projecting these numbers fifteen, eighteen months into the future, and things change. And so rather than put yourself in a bind, I, I truly expect that you're going to be conservative on revenues and maybe a little, uh, little more open on the, on the expenditure side. But don't play games with that budget and pad, pad one area, because you're gonna spring this new project on them come September and say, well, if the money's in the budget, we can do that. So that's what we call playing games with the budget. And number seven, I cannot stress to you enough, same information to all the council members at the same time. If council members are starting to get the perception that you favor some council members over the other, wow, you got a problem. And so you gotta make sure that if one council member comes through the door and says, I want this information, obviously, you provide it to them, but then you turn around as soon as they leave and give it to everybody else. And that's what's so great about today's technology, you can scan stuff, you can, you can forward emails onto people. So you, they, within two minutes after you gave something to someone, everybody's got it. Because you don't wanna get in that, that perception that this council member is, quote, your favorite council member. And expect some council members to have some interaction with staff. Obviously, you don't wanna see micromanaging, and I think that's a topic that you might wanna have discussed with council members early on, is what is micromanaging and why isn't it a good thing? Uh, but do expect that there will be some interaction. As city administrator, I used to tell my department heads, you can have all the interaction you want, just let me know about it. When a council member seeks you out, I wanna know what it is they want to know. So that, once again, if it's something that all council members should know, we can get the word out there to all council members. And the other thing I wanna know is, is there a council member that's trying to influence someone? Maybe the public works director is being pursued by a council member who wants his street clout first in the morning. By golly, I gotta be to work at six, I want my street clout first thing in the morning. Well, wait a minute, now you've kind of overstepped your boundaries here a little bit, because individual council members cannot give directions to city staff. And that comes, there's a chain of command that we follow. So it's important that, uh, you be aware of that interaction, but also don't be so, uh, delusional to think that it's not gonna happen. Continuous communication on a weekly basis, I think, updates on what's going on. Avoid surprises. Sometimes when it comes to mayors and councils and boards, we gotta tell them over and over, you know? I used to kinda have a procedure I would use as, I would introduce the subject to one council saying, hey, council, we might be doing this down the road, just wanna give you a little heads up, give you a time to kinda think about it. And then maybe the next council meeting, we lay out the pros and cons and which way we wanna go. And then maybe the next council meeting, we come in with a decision. So that you don't walk in the door and say, we need a decision on this tonight. And now it's the first time they've ever heard about it. Now, you wanna avoid that, you wanna, you wanna kinda take things slow and, and introduce them to the topic. An annual workshop, like I talked about, goals and objectives, how things are taking place, uh, in the, in the city. And the ultimate goal is to build trust with that new council. Uh, or that new mayor, because if you don't build that trust, um, you're not gonna have a good relationship. So you gotta build the trust. And number thirteen, I didn't put on the screen, was, uh, Steve said, if you do all these twelve things and you still don't have a good relationship, number thirteen is, uh, update your resume. Start looking for a new job, because you're probably gonna need it, okay? Uh, just wrapping up things here for you. Um, I did a workshop for the league in twenty twenty on civility in the workshop, or in the workplace. Because as I've traveled the state, I'm noticing a lack of civility in some communities. I hope you're not one of those communities, but I, if you have a situation where you hate going to council meetings, my guess is the reason you hate going is because there's a lack of civility. Uh, I did a whole workshop on that, uh, for the league and wrote a little article, uh, that kinda delved, delved into that. If that's something you'd like more information on, I'd be happy to send it to you. And lastly, give you one more plug on the next workshop, and that's the ten habits of highly effective city councils. And, um, um, we'll talk more about some of these other things in a little bit more detail. Now, I gave you, uh, a number of handouts, uh, at Nevada Workshop. Um, also think, something I did in Anamosa, gave you an article on, uh, effective meetings, how to conduct an effective meeting. So, uh, these are all things that I'm not gonna read to you, obviously, today, you can, uh, look them over at your leisure. Um, with that, do we have any items that come in on the chat room?
I did see a couple there.
Okay.
Two, sorry.
Okay. Okay, my sound is unmuted, but it doesn't seem to work. Okay, next one.
Sorry about that, we didn't see that.
New council member here, where can I find the policy leader handbook? Your city clerk should be able to get one for you, for you from the Iowa League of Cities. Um, if you talk to, uh, uh, the folks down at the Iowa League of Cities office, um, they will, um, they can get you one of the new handbooks. Uh, a lot of times when you go to the part one of the municipal leadership academy, it's part of the registration, uh, that you'll get automatically. But if you didn't get to part one, you can still purchase the handbooks. Most cities will buy those for their council members. So council member, uh, if you're new, uh, don't spend your money on this. This, this, this is a legitimate expense that should be paid for by the city. Now, obviously, once it's paid for by the city, when you leave office, you need to give that back, uh, to them. But that's where you get it, is Iowa League of Cities, so. Do you have any other questions?
Yeah, are there any other questions for Pat? You can feel free to unmute yourself and ask the question, or pop it in the chat, I'll give you a couple. Second here.
Okay.
Um, and I do wanna mention two things, um, the, the session's being recorded, so I'm sorry for the person who wasn't able to get the sound working. If you were not able to hear the presentation, we'll be sending out the recording just to the people who are registered for the session today. And, um, also, the, the, uh, ten habits, um, training that Pat referred to, I'll be sending out the, uh, registration link for that tomorrow, so be watching for that email. Um, and I think that covers it, so if there aren't any more questions, um, Pat, thank you very much. Very, very wonderful training session again, so, um, thanks, everyone, for joining. We really appreciate your attendance and your interest and, and participation, so. Um, thank you very much, and we'll hopefully see you at the next training session.
Sure.
All right.
Thank you.